Item six, please. Conduct the business.
Item six A, receive update on planning study for the South Linden Avenue and Scott Street grade separation project and provide direction on pedestrian bicycle crossing.
I know we all have a few speakers on this, but first we'll call on city manager.
Of course. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, this is speakers on. This is item six A, correct?
You are correct, six A, on the South Linden Avenue and Scott Street grades separation. I know yourself and the director and Heywon will maybe be speaking on this.
Absolutely. So I will introduce this item really quick. So this is our grade separation project at South Linden and Scott Street. We were before the city council eighteen months ago with a decision to select the design alternative. The city council directed staff to go out and do additional community outreach. That outreach has been done and there was a very robust effort to reach out to the community, door knocking in a big virtual room that was appropriate for COVID-19. And so we are here tonight because this decision is extremely important and it's needed so we can seek additional funds to fund the next phase of the project. And so we postponed that decision for additional outreach a little bit over two months. And now we're back with the results of that outreach. And there is a decision that is before the council tonight. Our city engineer, Heywon Ritchie, will provide the presentation. And their staff as well as consultants that are attending this meeting that are able to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, City Manager Brogan. Good evening, Council, Honorable Mayor and Council, City Council members. My name is Heywon Ritchie and I'm the city engineer for the city of San Bruno. I'm here to provide you with an update on the planning study work performed between August and November of 2020 on the South Linden Avenue and Scott Street Caltrain grade separation project. City Manager Brogan summarized it well that we're bringing, the purpose of bringing this back to you is to evaluate the options that are available for pedestrian and bicycle crossing. And that is the last piece of direction needed in order to complete the project report and this phase of the study. The council is familiar with this project through the multiple meetings that we've had on the subject. And we do have grant funding in order to complete this planning study. And there is a funding deadline associated with completing the report. I also would like to add that in order for us to seek funding for additional phases, we do need to complete this phase. So I would like to start with just a brief, very brief overview of what a grade separation is. A grade separation is the crossing of two or more transportation modes at different elevations so they do not disrupt the flow of each other. An example of this would be at Huntington and San Bruno Avenue where the Caltrain station is located. In that case, the roadway is running underneath the railroad tracks and the station. So why build a grade separation? Benefits of grade separations include increased safety, reduced train horn noise, and over time traffic congestion mitigation due to anticipated increase in gate downtime with Caltrain's adopted business plan. The project development team consists of the cities of San Bruno and South San Francisco with support from Caltrain as a railroad and planning study contract owner. Consultants include ACOM, Apex, CDM, and the Capacity Astrolux. This is the agenda for the presentation tonight. First, I'll be going over the objectives, summarize the work performed by the PDT and the key decisions by council to date, summarize the community engagement efforts and feedback received for the latest round between August and November of 2020, provide staff recommendation, answer questions, receive direction, and then I will go over next steps. The objectives for tonight are to provide an update of the work performed. This includes delivering this update and summarizing the feedback collected, presenting staff's recommendation, and requesting city council's direction on the pedestrian bicycle crossing type preferred at Scott Street. This slide shows the work performed to date, including community meetings and updates to the city council. As you can see, we began community outreach in August of 2018, and it is a series of outreach and council updates over the past two plus years. I would like to highlight some of the key directions that have been provided. In October of 2018, staff were directed to conduct a traffic study, obtain additional community feedback on the alternatives, and this included at the time the railroad and the crossing. So the PDT did do this. In November 2019, the results of the traffic study and community outreach were presented. Direction was received to close Scott Street to regular traffic while providing a pedestrian bicycle grade cross, grade separated crossing. This would allow for safety and traffic congestion concerns to be addressed while not requiring residential property acquisitions. Just recently in August of 2020, council provided direction to proceed with the alternative that would allow for the railroad tracks to be raised two and a half feet. However, they did direct staff to return to the community for additional feedback on the pedestrian bicycle crossing type. And we did hear this loud and clear. This slide summarizes outreach plan for the last round of community engagement. And reflecting on our past experience and with being in COVID, things had changed quite a bit. And so the PDT brainstormed various ideas and came up with a more novel approach to reach community members. With the assistance of our consultant, ACOM, a virtual open house was created that would allow residents and community to view models, conceptual renderings, and photo simulations, as well as take a survey on a website platform. We sent mailers to the surrounding neighborhood, which was approximately 450 properties in the fifth edition within city limits east of the railroad tracks. We handed out door hangers to about a third of the area closest to the crossing with some receiving the hanger twice. I personally went door to door masked and socially distanced along the homes on Herman between Buena Vista and Atlantic. I created hard copy packets for those who might not have internet access. And one resident did mention that, so I was able to write through that packet. The survey was also included. And when we, when I went door to door there, when it was evident that Spanish translation was needed, I returned with the Spanish translator in order to provide, you know, better service. It happened to be when I returned, there was another resident who answered the door and I was able to see if I'm in English, but you know, we did make that extra effort to return to that location. So with the help of our Jennifer Dianos and our city manager's office, we also issued information on our social media. We posted on Nextdoor, Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. We utilized the city manager's newsletter, installed a changeable message sign with the help of our streets division. I know they are stretched thin, so it's definitely very appreciated. And I have some photos of the sign on in the subsequent slide. So these are images of our door hanger that were provided. On one side was English, on the other side, Spanish. These notices that had contained the same information was also mailed. These are snapshots of the social media postings. A snapshot of the newsletter. And photographs of the changeable message sign. So there were two. We were constrained by the number of characters, so the message read, please take survey by November 4th at the website address scottstreetgradesep.com, which is still up and running if you're interested in dealing. So the focus of the community outreach was to direct the public to the virtual open house. In my more informal door to door, you know, there were some off the cuff responses. And I think I had shown the pictures that were available to us from the renderings. And those at the time did seem to favor the undercrossing, but I really, you know, my emphasis was to ask them if they had the ability to please go to the website, you know, spend their time on the site and then in the virtual open house and then to complete the survey. There are interactive 3D models and views, conceptual renderings, photo simulations, maps, and a survey to provide the feedback. The virtual open house can be located by typing in the URL into the URL scottstreetgradesep.com and street is S T, or by going onto the city's website at sanbruno.ca.gov. There is a link on the main page, but you can also type Scott Street grade separation in the search box and it will be the first result. It will be the project website, but the virtual open house link can be accessed from there. I would like to show you the website now. To stop sharing momentarily and reshare the new screen. So this is the virtual open house. The public could, you know, at all hours of the day and this for as long as they wished, view the contents. I had a welcome video here, which they could see when they first enter the room. On this easel is a virtual room tutorial. There are three tutorials that are ACOM team produced. One, an overview of the room, the pedestrian bicycle crossing options, as well as how to navigate the survey. Then if you pan around the room. I will come back to the center, but here this is, survey is now closed. It was open from October 15th to November 4th. But that, this is where the survey could be accessed as well as at the bottom of the page here. We do have the advantages and disadvantages of each option, which I will also have in a subsequent slide for my presentation. Here we have a 3D rendering of the city. And so we have Herman going left to right. Yes?
I'm still seeing your PowerPoint. I don't see the, the room.
I am so sorry. I may not, must not be sharing the correct screen. Are you able to see the screen now with the virtual open house?
That's it.
Okay, I am so sorry. I was going on and on and you can see what I was looking at. Apology, so I'll do a quick recap. I think you forgot, this is a welcome video tour, the table, and then the survey and the survey can access here. And here we have Herman Street going left to right. And we have South San Francisco to the left. And the South Linden Avenue as well as 380 overpass to the right. Sorry, South Avenue to the left and I have 380 to the right. Then we have the Scott Street grade separation here. And if you hover over this area, which is in the vicinity of the crossing and click, you can choose either option one or option two. I'd like to just take a moment and show what happens when we do that. We get an image of the overcrossing and 3D representation. And there are various views that we can see as it currently exists on Herman looking north and then what it would look like with an overcrossing. We had shown this previously, but people could take, or the public could take, you know, their time in looking at the images. And so here we have, you know, one and two level holes. We also have another view directly looking at the track. And looking south on Herman. What was also pretty neat was this 3D rendering. You could see how high up the overcrossing is. It's about 35 feet up and with eye level maybe being at five feet, that's about 40 feet high. And then also some views from the Montgomery side. And so this is the parking lot that we're envisioning to put in the overcrossing and the undercrossing opening on the other side of the tracks. Here we do see due to the length of the overcrossing, you can see some switchbacks and you can see that in the bird's eye view as well. Wraps around. And then you can also look at the undercrossing option. Again, the image shifts to the undercrossing. We have again views one, two, and three, as well as some 3D. And this you may not have seen previously, but is available in the virtual open house is what the image would look like. And so we have, I believe this is about 83 feet from start of tunnel to start of tunnel. Stairs on one side and the ramp on the other to meet ADA, as well as a 3D on the other side. So again, a ramp with stairs and then the crossing. And you can see the other side here. Bird's eye view. And again, bird's eye view. Sorry, so down street view and bird's eye view. Okay, so I will go back to my presentation now. Okay. So I would like to provide you with a virtual open house statistics. There were a total of 478 visits from October 15th to November 4th with 386 unique visitors. On average, they spent 12 to 14 minutes in the virtual open house. We received 43 survey respondents, of which 32 were residents or businesses within the fifth edition or east of the railroad tracks within San Bruno City limits. So this may be, you know, residents or business on Montgomery, for instance. I do want to get into a little bit more detail about the particular options of overcrossing and undercrossing. So first I'll start with the overcrossing. This is the bird's eye view of what we're looking at. Again, we have a ramp on the Herman side and then the switchbacks utilizing that parking space on the east side. So this planned view, which was also available in the virtual open house, the ramp is shown in magenta and the actual bridge portion is shown, the bridge portion over the tracks is shown in tan. The yellow shows the stairs. I did receive a call about the access in the back of the lot facing Montgomery. I want to point out that there is still access in this area here. This is the alley and I want to show that there's an extension of this in a driveway. So no one is losing access on the Montgomery side. The crossing length for the overcrossing is a quarter mile, which takes about six minutes to walk. And I count this real quickly and the pace is about two and a half miles an hour or someone walking about one mile in 24 minutes. The bridge would be about 35 feet high in place, eye level about 40 feet above street. This is the undercrossing bird's eye view. Again, we have the ramps on, so there's a ramp going down and then a ramp coming back up on the other side of the railroad tracks with the tunnel underneath. Again, the magenta shows the ramps, the yellow is the stairs, and the brown portion, which is 83 feet, is shown in the tan shading. The crossing is about 640 feet in length, which takes about three minutes to traverse as compared to six minutes for the overcrossing. So it's about half the length. And the undercrossing would be approximately 15 feet down and 15 feet back up. So construction cost is not a major differentiating factor between the crossing types. Some of the considerations that are included in the advantages, advantages are the privacy. For an overcrossing, there would be less privacy for the adjacent residences because they would be, you know, quite a bit over the residences. In terms of visibility, pedestrians and bicyclists might want to be more visible when using the crossing. So this tends to favor the overcrossing. But there could be times because of the structure is quite large that behind switchbacks, you know, visibility, maintaining visibility all the time could be a challenge. There is, you know, less susceptible to flooding with the undercrossing, visual impacts. Again, then a crossing is less visually impactful. And travel distance, the undercrossing would be quicker to traverse and also less strenuous to cross because it's not, the elevation difference is not quite as much. We do want to note that encampments was a consideration, but this was considered to be more neutral because maintenance would be required for either both over and undercrossings. And so these various factors were parlayed into the survey questions. There were multiple ways to access the survey and the survey was also translated into Spanish. I would like to get into the actual survey questions. There were five and we anticipate that it would take, you know, five minutes or less to answer them. The first question were to provide the most important considerations for the pedestrian bicycle crossing. And the ones I just mentioned were the ones that were listed. And there was also an other that someone could put something if they believe that there, not all items were covered. The second question is fairly straightforward. Which pedestrian bike crossing option do you prefer at Scott Street? Option one with overcrossing or option two with undercrossing? Question three, are there any additional questions or comments about the project? Question four, where do you live? Fifth edition, other neighborhoods in San Bruno or other? And then contact information. So for the feedback we received, we received 24 selecting the undercrossing as our preference, 16 selecting the overcrossing, three did not make a selection. I would like to note that, so these are the main considerations that were selected by respondents in order of selection from highest to lowest. So encampments and maintenance was a top consideration regardless of whether it was an over or undercrossing. Shorter distance, greater travel, greater privacy for residents, lessening visual impacts were the top three. And I would like to note that those did favor the undercrossing. So it's consistent with the greater selection of the undercrossing as a preference. Visibility of pedestrians followed that. Other various reasons, these range from accessibility, ADA, some did not want the grade separation at all. Some wanted a tunnel for the train, which I think is not physically feasible. They just want to make sure the tunnel is more aesthetically pleasing. One respondent said that the encampment was a concern, but they recognized that there could be potential, you know, for spaces underneath supporting structures with the overcrossing. And then one respondent said that they would like to minimize the vertical movement of pedestrians up and down or down and up. And then less susceptible to flooding was the last option. So let's have him favoring that. So staff recommendation is to support the pedestrian bicycle undercrossing. There is community support. There'd be a shorter travel distance, less visual impact to the community, and greater privacy for the residents, which were some of the top concerns that were expressed. I would like to touch on the maintenance agreement. At the last meeting in August, city council had requested additional information about maintenance aspects. Maintenance agreements are typically developed and negotiated between final design and construction, but this discussion can occur sooner. And Caltrain has indicated that we can have that discussion. We heard loud and clear that this was a high priority and we can begin having those discussions. A good place to start might be an existing maintenance agreement we already have for San Bruno Avenue, reflecting on what has worked and what hasn't worked and what could be included. So we can have that, those discussions with Caltrain and also bring back in subsequent meetings or study sessions in advance of the project. These discussions. So other maintenance aspects that are subject to discussion and negotiating include cleaning and frequency, graffiti removal, stormwater, and sewer pumping system, tree and vegetation maintenance, et cetera. And Caltrain did indicate that they typically assume responsibility for rail related maintenance. So for the pedestrian bicycle crossing, Caltrain would likely maintain the structure and the lighting. The next steps for tonight include responding to any questions that council may have, public comments, requesting city council's direction for the preference of pedestrian bicycle crossing types. So I would like to pause there and check in with the council to see if there are questions.
Are there any questions currently by council?
None here.
And then if there are any members of the public that are with us that did want to speak on this item, if you could also go ahead and raise your virtual hand and I want to be able to call on you next after we go by council real quick. None from council member Davis. Anything else before I go to public for right now?
Just a quick question, Mayor?
Yes.
Heywon, thank you for the presentation and for all the work that you've done. I've attended some of the meetings and you're just really well balanced as far as your responses to the community. I did want to ask, one of the issues that we've heard about is obviously the homeless, the potential for homeless or in the underpass. And I'm just curious to know if there is an existing underpass that I was, that I went and walked through. And I'm curious to know if there have been any issues there that we should worry about that could then reflect potential issues if we select the underpass versus the overpass.
I'm sorry, are you prepared for that or do you want me to bring in the chief? Heywon?
What we've heard from the police is that there have not been issues with homelessness in the past one to two years. I, if the chief would like to tribute on that, that's more than welcome. And then I just wanted to maybe request clarification. Are you speaking of the other underpasses that were in San Bruno?
Yes, it's like an adjacent underpass. And I've heard from residents who have reached out regarding, you know, more in favor of the overpass, that there's a history with the existing underpass. And that's why they fear going with the underpass as opposed to the overpass. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. I did reach out to the police department and they provided a response that at those particular locations that they have not seen an issue with the homelessness. At least I believe in the past one to two years that they had looked into their system. And I think the maintenance and response to that, I think would definitely need to be ironed out and, you know, make sure that it's discussed and covered in the agreement and that there is a plan should that happen. And I may, I would like to also add that it would be concern, you know, for both an over and an undercrossing, just because there could be potentially spaces that are created in overcrossing. And so it doesn't necessarily mean that one type of crossing necessarily would only have that problem and the other might not. But I think, I think the maintenance and response really would be critical.
Thank you.
Are there questions? I'm going to go head over to, we have a speaker, city clerk?
Yes, we have John Franklin.
Hello?
Hi, John, whenever you're ready.
So John, you want, yeah.
It's him. It's Hansong, my husband will be speaking.
Yeah, this is Hansong, John's husband. So I want to say something. And we lived in Scott Street for many years. And I, I visited the website before, but I didn't vote. The reason is I don't like both, both design. Actually, I suppose, I, I suppose the overcrossing strategy, however, it is not a good design because we have a long distance travel and it looks, it doesn't look that good. So to resolve the ADA issue, we can use an elevator for that, just like the conscience station there. So why we need to build that a long ramp and give people that long distance, just like open space to stand there to observe the, the area. It is not necessary. We only need to build a small space there and to build an elevator to let the people go up. And just we can use a normal stair thing to wrap it up. As a design professional, I really propose that kind of proposal. For undercrossing, as I mentioned many times, for the homeless issue, the reason I have this concern because on the highway 380, it is, it is a place we drive every day home and it is a huge bridge, you know, it is a highway 380. There are always homeless people under the bridge place and we can see the tents, we can see the abandoned sofa and a lot of things there because this area is close to target and it, and it is not far away to town from more. And it is a busy place. So it is a reason I have a concern that the undercrossing will have the homeless people because it is happening on the highway 380. If any of you drive here and pass here, you will see something. And highways 380, this area, it is only a quarter mile through the Scott, the, the intersection between Scott and the Herman Street. So it is a major concern for, for that. And I believe I still support the overcrossing strategy, but I don't support the design. And I have the feeling that so the city just provide not that good design to put it there. And we have no choice sometimes. I visited the website a couple of times. I, I really don't want to vote, I have to say. Yeah. So this is something I want to say and I hope you can consider a better design for the overcrossing, especially for the elevator similar as the conscience station. Thank you.
Actually, I would like to make one more quick statement. Also on mobile, it is not possible to actually, to actually click the link to actually access the website. So there could, that could have influenced the survey results as well.
Yeah. And, and also for the design.
Sir, sir?
Yeah.
You, you had your three minutes. The other, but, but John, if you wanted to continue, please feel free.
Yeah, that, that was the only thing. I was just noting that on mobile, you can't actually, you cannot actually access the survey from the proposed website. That could influence the survey results. That's all I was saying.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Okay, is there any other public comment?
No, I do not see any other hands raised.
Okay, thank you. All right, if we can bring it to council, if staff has concluded with their presentation and comments, or city manager, do you have something or? Okay. Colleagues.
To the chair?
Council member, council member Medina, then Vice Mayor Salazar.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I really want to thank staff for, for really. Showing the amount of outreach you guys put into. Getting our community involved, I mean. This was probably the biggest one I've seen and I really want to let you know how much I appreciate it. So. Did we hear? From the residents that would be most impacted by? People being able to look into their backyards, would we be able to get to speak to any of those people? That's my first question, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, did you want me to answer questions as they come?
Well, let me ask you.
I can keep on going, I can keep on going.
Is that okay?
I'm flexible either way, I just want to make sure.
We appreciate that, we'll let council member Medina ask the questions and I'll have you respond.
Okay.
That's, that's fine. So. To, I understand. A number of the. Survey takers were concerned about the homeless. And. Will this design have some like video cameras, is that something that we'll talk about later to kind of like? For added security that these cameras would be operating? In comparison to this tunnel. How much longer is it than the two existing tunnels? That are here in San Bruno? And I wanted to. Get a little more clarity on this email that was sent. I believe to the whole council. The email basically says that. The majority of people. Addressed the encampments as the number one issue, but. I don't see in the survey that it was ranked as the most important issue. And if we can go back to the survey at some point. The residents had an opportunity to vote for, for under crossing or the over crossing and. The data there showed that the majority wanted the under crossing. And, and those are my questions for now.
Thank you, I, I got three questions out of that, hey Juan, are you okay to proceed?
Yes, so from, to respond to whether we heard directly from the residents who would be most impacted. Those are the homes that I went door to door, I had printouts of the. The renderings with me so that I could show them to them, just so that they were aware, you know, most of them actually were aware of the project. Some, you know, were following more closely than others, but I really wanted to highlight to them that these are available for them to view. I, I would like to say several of them, I want to say about three had expressed that they preferred the under crossing. Upon viewing the handouts that I had, but I did not, you know, my emphasis more was for them to actually really take the time because. I mean, I took my time, I didn't rush when I was doing it, but. There's nothing like being able to look at all of the documents and look through them at their convenience and then providing their survey, but. I guess informally, I. Three had said that they preferred the under crossing, I do want to say the. The third time I went back, there was one household and I did noted that they. Had voted for the over crossing and so one did prefer how the over crossing looked. And they were more on the north end near Bay Shore Circle. But those right at Scott Street, I would say there were three sort of right near each other that said, oh, you know, I think I'd prefer the under crossing and so. That was my, you know, sort of informal survey when I spoke to them door to door. Really, my emphasis was to get them, you know, to look at the virtual room and do the survey, but that is what I heard. As far as homeless encampments, I think that is something that was in the survey as one of the options and that was one of the most selective items. Actually, it was the top one was encampments and vandalism and, you know, those would have to be addressed in the maintenance and response. Plan that would be developed and so. You know, there, there was recognition that that is a concern and we wanted to. Have that as an option available in the survey for them, for the committee to express that. You know, they could always say as an other, but I think we had heard enough, there was enough of a concern that we added that, so that was one of the top concerns. In terms of specific measures to deal with surveillance, with video cameras. And they just speak with, have Caltrain discuss whether they have that existing stations, but I think that is, you know, part of the design and. Could be, you know, further discussed as we go along and how long is this, this particular tunnel is eighty-three feet. I don't have the specific number for the Sylvan or the Euclid crossing, it may be just a bit shorter because. Well, I don't know, I probably shouldn't guess. Do you happen to know?
Yeah, hey Juan, you, this is Peter Di Stefano from ACOM. Euclid is forty feet, I'm not sure about Sylvan and then Homer Avenue, the one people compare that one to quite often, that one's seventy feet, that one's in Cabo Alcoa.
Okay, thank you, hey Juan. Vice Mayor Salazar, then council member Davis.
Thank you, so first of all, I just wanted, I wanted to thank staff for the effort that went into this. We, we asked for more community input and you guys really stepped up, I think the. Virtual tour is, is really great at providing a different perspective and really. Helping people visualize what each of these solutions represents and so thank you for going that extra effort and responding to our request. During these COVID times, I know it's difficult and, you know, we had the, the community meetings before and we've actually come a long way. And we had a lot of really serious concerns back in the beginning where people thought they might lose their properties and. We've addressed all those issues and, you know, staff has done a fantastic job of addressing the issues and, and making. Information readily available, so I, I just wanted to thank staff for, for getting us, getting us to this point. And then, you know, the, I think the homeless issue still is, it's still a concern and a lot of people are very frightened about that. I, I think that with adequate lighting, it looks like the design that's being proposed is open enough where we should be able to make that area. Not as intimidating for people to approach it even. You know, as, you know, coming in and later in the day or early in the morning when it's dark. That's going to be important, so I, I know the staff report included. A copy of our previous agreement for the other grade separations and it did address a lot of those issues, so I think it would definitely be important for us to. Include those going forward. It also included in there was video surveillance, so I know that Caltrain does actively monitor their stations. I believe it's actually monitored by the transit police, which is. That, that's a function of the sheriff's department. If possible, I would like to see maybe better integration between transit police and our local PD. So if there are issues that we would be able to address those a little. Faster than having to wait for a response, you know, to go to. The transit police in San Carlos and then get dispatched back out to, to the sheriff's department if we can, you know, have. A way to address those issues by, you know, having, having the PD involved more in any. Safety issues that might arise. You know, I don't think I've seen any, you know, the emergency sort of. Phones or, you know, the, the systems they have in some other places where you can, you know, if, if there is an issue, you can just pick up a phone and get a. A direct line to the police and, you know, possibly incorporating something like that might also. Assist with, you know, making people feel more comfortable with, with the underpass. But that's it.
Thank you, council member Davis.
I'm going to echo what my colleagues have already said, but I, I think I have to just say it again, I mean, this presentation, the work that you've done, hey Juan, the department. Has been outstanding, even the street sign on Herman to encourage people to go out on the website. You know, the door hangers, you know, we've given the community an opportunity to speak up. Am I sad to see very few responses? Yes, I am. Do the numbers sway me one way or the other just because one is sixty percent more than the other? No, because honestly, this is a low number for the residents who live in that community or even businesses. But safety is number one for me. It's a hard, it's a tough one. I, I know what it feels like to feel like somebody's looking into your backyard. You know, anytime there's new construction around your neighborhood, somebody puts a second story addition, there goes your privacy. You know, somebody two streets away put a second addition and they can see. Family room with this big windows that I have and you're like, wow, really? So it's crazy, so privacy kind of goes out the door and even though you have a home and you buy a home, that privacy kind of leaves, so. I just. I, I think I go back and I, I want to say it's Huntington and Euclid, there's an underpassing that we have, but it's so. Open, it's so, it seems like it doesn't drop down as much, there's a. A big distance between where it drops down and where the stairs that go down and it seems very open and you don't feel like there's a safety concern. This one to me provides a potential safety concern. We can't even take care of pigeon poop underneath the Caltrain station at San Bruno Avenue. I mean, it's such a, it's such a burden that we have with Caltrans. And I know that they're out there all the time because the amount of things that happen at the stations are pretty, pretty disgusting. They're out there sometimes daily, the stuff that they've done to the elevators, the stuff that they've done inside the elevators. So it exists, vandalism exists. And I just am fearful of the neighborhood and I question whether or not we sacrifice safety. For something that might be aesthetically not pleasing, so those are some of my comments, thank you so much.
Okay, now I've seen any other hands up from council? Then. Hey Juan and city manager, is there additional feedback or comments you need from us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we would like direction on the preferred design alternative today. We are doing this project in collaboration with South San Francisco. And based on that direction, we will go out and seek additional funds for the next phase of this project.
Okay, most have spoken and, and, you know, the aesthetics of the, the elevation and the distance of travel. I don't know that elevators are going to add but a potential. Challenge as far as operational, what, what happens in them, obviously if it goes down, it's going to preclude. Folks from going across. I think that it's important, what some of my colleagues had said about the lighting, about the video. About the transit authority and Vice Mayor is correct, so when we have an incident on the track. You know, our emergency vehicles respond and then they wait for the transit in order to hand it over. Them to continue whatever investigation and or things that may exist. So for me personally, at this time, and I do know there's. Importance with dealing with South City as well as trying to secure additional funding source. So at this time, I'm leaning toward the under. Other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to add in. We. We heard from those that are interested in replying and, and the majority of them. Did choose the under crossing and, and I believe we could mitigate. Future homeless problems, so I, I would go along with the staff recommendation for the under crossing.
Other council members?
Through the mayor.
Uh, council member Mason.
I, I just, I, I am okay with the under crossing with the. Addition that council must approve any maintenance agreement prior to any groundbreaking. I am concerned about the agreement that I saw and I think we need some more very specific. Measurables and metrics around the maintenance and the upkeep. And I'm not comfortable approving or directing staff to select. The underpass without being clear that I believe council should approve the final maintenance agreement. And that it should be done before there's a groundbreaking.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Yeah, I, I think that's an excellent point about the, the maintenance agreement. You know, I, I, I know that that was something that would definitely come back to us, but I know that with the experience we've had with the last. The last grade separation that it would make sense for us to make sure we have some agreements in place, I, I know that it's very, it's very early in the process right now, but that. That is a, a good point, I want to make sure that that gets captured somewhere and that we, that we are in agreement on that. But I also, I, 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 I think I'm going to trust staff's judgment on this and. It sounds like the, the under crossing is. Going to be a, a better solution, you know, it would have been nice to have input from. You know, maybe, you know, some members that, that have, you know, mobility issues just to, to get their take on it because it does seem like. The, the under crossing is an easier one to navigate if, if say you're in a wheelchair or using a cane or, or a walker or something. Trying to get up those huge switchbacks is hard, I've done it on a bicycle and it's hard. You know, I, I can imagine it would be challenging for them as well, so. You know, I, I, I agree that we need to be very sensitive to the safety issues, but I, I will also. Throw my. My support behind the under crossing.
Council member Davis?
It's a tough one for me, I can honestly tell you, I, I've just, I've seen too many other locations with under crossings that don't get maintained, they smell like urine. They're just dangerous, I don't know, I would really let my kids go underneath there if it was developed. But I understand what the, the majority have said and so I can support that and I can support staff's recommendation, but. It's a, it's a tough one.
Okay, so city manager, what I've heard is a consensus of all council, though tough as it may be. At times and concern for safety and lighting and maintenance. That to go forward with staff recommendation, does that give you enough guidance and. Clear understanding from council's desire?
Absolutely, as well as the requirement that this, that the maintenance agreement come back before the city council.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute. That is something that I, I think what council is asking for is to see, I don't know that we're asking to sit down and negotiate. An agreement, but we want to see the final product.
Absolutely.
And, and, and I think what it goes to is, for example, though it gets very technical in the current grade separation. The pumps were not adequate to pump the water that they installed, now would we have known that in a maintenance agreement? Maybe not. But I know I, I made sure on being on the TA that at twenty-fifth and San Mateo that they're not going to experience that same challenge. Because of what happened here, but. We may not be able to grasp every minutia of it, but I think you understand the level of what the concern is.
Correct.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you, all right.
Actually, through, through the mayor, I just want to be clear, I agree, we're not negotiating, we're authorizing the city manager to negotiate, but I, I would ask that we approve the agreement.
It is coming back.
Okay, great, thank you.
That he already, he said that, but yes, but we're not going to be sitting here negotiating during the meeting, that, that will come from staff. In a final report.